I'd like to call to order the 2 o'clock meeting of the Sparks City Council on June 26, 2017, please with a roll call.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
And Acting City Manager Cruts?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
If you'd all stand for the invocation, the Speaker today will be Pastor Christopher Dare of the Freedom Fellowship.
Hello. I see. Let's go ahead and bow our head. Lord, I come to you and I do thank you for our day. Lord, I pray that you give us wisdom as we make decisions for our city and for the families and the businesses that call this their home. Lord, I do pray, just as the Fourth of July is coming and we really do focus in on what is happening with our veterans, that I do thank you for our nation. I thank you for what you're doing. Lord, I pray for those in the military that will not be with their family in this next month to come. They're off and they're fighting and they're making a place so we're safe here. Lord, I do pray for our nation. I pray for our leaders. I pray for this council and I pray for our decisions we make today. Let them honor you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Christopher. Very nice. If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Lawson, would you lead us?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one comment card for someone today. If you want to make a public comment, please fill out one of these cards with our clerk and we'll get you up here for three minutes. Now I have two cards. Okay, the first one is Charles Albright. Welcome, Charles.
Thank you for having me, Dennis. So, what's going on in Sparks, Loma Breena, and Washoe County, the owners of Toma? Toma has plans to rebuild four dams upstream where they're basically going to take the head walls on the Flash Diverge Dam, state line dam, which is a super ditch.
By diversion in what we call Washoe Highlands dams. They're going to leave the concrete structure up high and they're going to fill what is typically about 12 foot elevation from the top all the way to the bottom of the river and out several hundred yards to create fish migration for fish and wildlife. Wildlife's got funds, they're going to use a whole bunch of money to try and fix this. My opinion is that if you want fish to go up a river, let's get rid of the dams instead and let the fish go up a natural river. Wouldn't it be nice to have a natural rush Truckee River again? So anyway, so what's the problems? Well, the fact is that you guys create power with that dam, those two dams or three dams. And it's an insignificant amount of power. It's like 2,500 homes for all the people who live in this whole community. So what I'm saying is, why don't we just instead do like a solar plant someplace, a field, farm, whatever, that supplies power for 2,500 homes, give it to Toma, and then decommission these dams. I know you've spent a lot of money on their infrastructure lately, but decommission them, let the river go back to being a river. And basically, I'm speaking for the river because I don't think there's anybody on these boards that really cares. Because otherwise, you'd be thinking like I am, that hey, maybe we should actually think past the big ball and try and let the river be what it used to be, natural, no dams. As far as what goes on with the two dams that divert water, Highland and Steamboat, you could do what's called a bladder dam there, which is you pour a concrete structure across the bottom, you anchor a large neoprene wall essentially, lays down during non-irrigation season, you crank it up with cables during irrigation season. Now the water's going off into the ditches. So they still have, you know, what do you call it? Water for food, fields. And then the other thing is that you can build a fish ladder at those points, but it's kind of stupid to do something that involves spending a hell of a lot of money just to make it so fish can migrate when if instead you're going to keep these dams, you're going to de-water the river and those stretches of river. So the fish are living in 80 degree water during the summertime. So let's look, let's look at doing something different. You spend a whole lot of money, it costs a lot less to get rid of the dams, turn the ones that could be natural back into dams or riverbed, and then instead take the money and put it towards a solar farm. And that's about it. I spoke to Toma last week and I kind of stepped on my words like I am right now, but the bottom line is, let's think about the future. What do you want to do for your kids? Have a real river or have more stupid dams? That's about it. Thanks.
All right. You guys have good. Kristi Chakaruglu and Alicia Reban? Did I get close?
Raban.
Raban, okay. That's close. Have a seat, ladies. You ladies have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Are we on? Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and members of the council. My name is Alicia Raban. I'm Executive Director of Nevada Land Trust. Here today on behalf of One Truckee River, the initiative founded by NLT and our friends at KTMB in 2015, joined by my friend and colleague Kristi Chakaruglu with KTMB. As you know, One Truckee River is a comprehensive and collaborative effort of over 130 stakeholders working in, on, and along the Truckee River from the state line to in everything from recreation to water qualities to social issues and arts and culture. At the time of your upcoming Truckee River plan in September 2016, we promised to return to give you some periodic updates. I hope you each got a copy in early May of the new current. We've gotten extra copies to you today, which is a quarter of the time. I'd like to give you one of the Truckee River stakeholders' quick status update. Over the past, I'd like to present placement of mile markers along the Truckee River by the developed with the Sparks and Reno Fire Department. They exist for safety first, giving first responders and water entry teams specifically a point of reference to quickly plan and execute swift water rescue. Secondary benefits, of course, for health and recreation. Thank you to council members Bybee and Abbott for attending the First Marker Celebration at Fisherman's Park and Manny Caesar, who are both part of the community, so great to work with. We'll be ready to finish the Spark section following flood-related repairs and resurfacing and return to slightly cooler temperatures, which is required by our adhesive. Nevada, two points along the river currently to boost safety for children, particularly playing in and at the river. You may have seen similar stations elsewhere. I saw some last summer in Oregon with the big reminder, kids don't float. One Truckee River has completed a survey of over 1,000 area residents to learn more about how the river is used, understood, and perceived, or not. The data is currently being analyzed by UNR Center for Economic Development and will be used as a baseline for developing community education outreach messages and programs that are such a vital part of OTR. One Truckee River is also examining long-term structures to continue to focus on implementation of Phase 1 X9 and the end plan for Phase 2 from Vista to Pyramid Lake. Finally, I'd like to take this opportunity to make you aware of contributions to OTR and our community of Fort Saxon volunteers, whose time with us has come into a close. Out of all the American volunteer members across the country, I think we got the very best ones. They're collecting 6,800 hours into the Truckee River and OTR, all the current educators at KTMB and NLT have had a significant impact on OTR and our ability to move forward. I can't possibly name all they've done, but it's like Kessie Perrine, Emily Olrich, Meg Parker, and even Tony Cusman. Receive our appreciation for all of your contributions. We really need you to go forward. Thank you for your service, Mayor. Thank you for your support of One Truckee River.
Thank you. Appreciate all you guys do. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take any items out of order? If not, looking for a motion? Second. I have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Next is number six, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of June 12, 2017. Any omissions or corrections? Do you have a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dare, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve the minutes of the June 12, 2017 meeting. Any further questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Moving on to number seven, presentations. Presentation of the upcoming Last Chance Joe DMV license plates by Dick Drilling of the Sparks Heritage Museum. Mr. Drilling, welcome.
Mayor Martini asked me to make a short presentation on how this plate came about. I'm Dick Drilling, Secretary of the Board of Sparks Heritage Museum, DBA Sparks Museum and Cultural Center. In May 2010, I decided to explore the possibilities of getting a charity license plate to benefit the Sparks Museum. Researching the DMV website, I found that Reno was on a waiting list of upcoming plates. The idea of Reno having a plate and Sparks not disturbed me. So I brought the idea of a charity plate up to the next museum board meeting, which was well received, and a motion was made that we proceed with the attempt to obtain one. During discussion on the motion, the design was discussed, it was agreed that design should reflect the city and not the museum, as it would have wider appeal. The roundhouse was suggested, but it just didn't, didn't work well. Same with the view of historic sparks. Locomotive was suggested, but the VNT plate has a locomotive. We finally decided perhaps a Victorian Avenue arch would work. I contacted Mayor Martini, he gave us a letter, given permission to use that, and we sent requests to DMV requesting the plate be issued. At a meeting in Carson City, we were selected to be a recipient of the plate. However, there was a waiting list. We were number 12 on the waiting list. The DMV only allows 30 active plates in circulation at any one time. The only way to progress up to the top of the list is for 11 existing plates to be retired. The usual way a plate is discontinued is if there are to maintain 1,000 active plates issued. The legislature requires a $5,000 bond be supplied for initial application. The bond will be called in if the 1,000 plates are not issued in the initial year of issue, but if 1,000 plates are issued, the bond may be retired. We found a company who would issue a bond for a fee of $300 a year. In October 2014, the figure of Last Chance Joe was moved from Nugget and eventually installed in front of the museum. At the next board meeting, the idea of using Last Chance Joe on the plate instead of the Victorian Arches was doubly desired, as it was determined that Reno was going to have the Reno arch on their plate. And no offense, the Victorian arch doesn't hold up to that. Sparks had looked like a poor stepchild. That could not be happening. We discovered the image of Last Chance Joe had been trademarked by Rick Haney. He was contacted to see if we could use the image on the plates and determine what the licensee, licensee cost of using the image would be. Mr. Haney was very helpful, gave the museum permission to use the image on the plate at no charge. On October 1, 2014, USA Today, on their Nation Now page, had a small item, quote, "Nevada, Sparks. The beloved Last Chance Joe statue that has graced the entrance to John Squawges in Europe for 56 years will be moved to a Sparks Museum after new owners decided to have it taken down," the Reno Evening Gazette reported Tuesday, end quote. This little note was published in 17 newspapers in Florida, Wisconsin, Iowa, Minnesota, Hawaii, New York, South Dakota, South Carolina, California, Missouri, Oregon, New Jersey, Tennessee, Michigan, and North Carolina. In addition, the image of Last Chance Joe appears on several travel websites, saying travelers, "When traveling on I-80, stop in Sparks and take a look at Last Chance Joe." That's one reason we're trying so hard to get the restoration completed. On January 19, 2017, I attended a meeting of DMV to begin the design process of the pending museum charity plate. I submitted a revision using Last Chance Joe instead of Victorian Arch. There was no problem with the substitution. The design phase began. On June 19, I returned back to Carson City to review the final panel design of the plate, which we see here. I had signed and dated a copy of the sample plate that indicated approval of the design. I was also given a sample copy of the plate. The plate will now be submitted to Highway Patrol to get their approval regarding visibility with day and night lighting. Once Highway Patrol approves the, the design, the plate will go into production. It's estimated to take up to two months for them to approve the design. Why, I don't know. They have to make sure that it's visible in daylight hours up to 100 feet and night hours up to 110 feet. Place issued, it'll be available at all 23 DMV plate issuing offices across the state. They may put it on cars, trucks, trailers, motorhomes, RVs, and motorcycles. The plates will cost $63 plus a $6 transfer fee initially. On second subsequent, subsequent, split out, following years, it can be $30. Motors desiring personalized plates or motorcyclists also must request special form available from DMV on their website. Now, the first 100 numbers, 00099, have been reserved for the museum assignment. The board trustees and the executive directors decided that we would have the first 15 or first 16 plates, that's 0000 to 0015, reserved for them. And that was to be drawn by lot. The remaining numbers are being reserved for museum members, city Sparks council, city council members, and Sparks employees, as a thank you for their continuing support. To get on one of these lower numbers, call the museum at 355-1144, leave your name and phone number, so we can contact you when the plate is available. And we also can, we have to, I guess, give you a letter to go to the DMV authorizing a specific number. Now, we cannot guarantee what number you might want. You might want number 25. We don't know. It's going to be on a first come, first served. If you have a special number you'd like, ask for it, we can check and see if it's there. If possible, when the plate actually is issued, we would appreciate any advertising or boosting the city of Sparks can, can do to make sure we have enough people know that it's out there. All Nevada residents are encouraged to buy the plates and proudly display this nationwide figure. The museum will receive $20 per plate in circulation. Now, as a thank you for anyone who buys the plate, bring your registration into the museum and the museum will give you $25 towards, a credit of $25 towards any membership level for a year. Any questions?
Questions for Dick. Good, good work, Dick, really.
Thank you.
Happy to see this, and I know Mr. Dean very well. Awful awful, so I'm going to try to get him to do a free awful awful when you get a license plate too.
Okay. One last item which has nothing to do with a license plate. I have a brand new book in my hand, it's from the Acadia Publishing Company and it's Sparks. This will go on sale July 20, nationwide. There will be a book signing at the museum on July 20 for people who'd like to come in and purchase one. There, it's full of pictures. You've never seen Acadia Publishing, they require 150 to 200 photos of a local area and a lot of history. And I, this is my personal copy because it's been endorsed by the, the author, Joyce Cox. And it's a great book.
Another question, Dick, if somebody wants a personalized plate, should they call the museum also and try to reserve that?
No, sir. Not required. There is a form on the DMV website that you fill out, they will have your information. So when it comes on sale, they will notify you. We won't. But they still count towards the, the 1,000 plates.
Okay, so if you want to personalize it, you got to go on the website.
And you're only allowed five characters.
I had another question, Dick, about Last Chance Joe. And you said you're still trying to finish the renovation. Are you still in the middle of a fundraising drive? Can people contribute to helping make sure that that project is completed? And how would they do that?
We are. We had received a $5,000 check from Governor Sandoval and a $5,000 check from Senator Ratty to go towards the restoration. We had a contract for a gentleman to do it for $10,000, but that's kind of fallen through. And so now, we're looking at Yescow, which is probably going to cost us around $26,000. So we definitely have to raise some additional funds to be able to do that.
So how, how would people contribute to that if they wanted to help out?
Check down to the museum and say it's for Last Chance Joe. You will receive a letter acknowledging the donation and it's, it's a letter that can be used for tax purposes, because that is a tax deductible donation.
There's nothing online? For a while, when you started, wasn't there like an online place you could go to save Last Chance Joe?
Yes, we did. We had NevadaFund.org.
Okay.
Problem there was, the amount of money that was left in there got so small that the fee of running the, the website was less than money we had in there.
Okay, so a check is best.
The money went away. We had plenty of money there. But there was a big mix-up. When the, when the move was first going to be going, at the time, Councilwoman Ratty got an anonymous donor who said he would pay for the entire cost of the movement, which is around $35,000. So we put in about $25,000, $26,000 in NevadaFund.org for the restoration. Well, the donor gave her a $6,000 check and disappeared. Joe was moved and we had to raid that money to pay for the move. And in addition, now we're, the museum is about $27,000 in the hole, of money that we've taken out of our operating funds for what restoration has been done so far. So yes, we're definitely looking for money.
Thank you.
So there's, there's a key, key figure about raising money for Last Chance Joe. I know we're going to do something with marijuana today, and there's a lot of marijuana dealers out there that might want to throw. I'm not sure, but I think it'd be, it'd be a good use, wouldn't it?
He don't smoke.
Well, that's, that's all right. He can, he can.
He can smother.
Exactly, exactly. So, well, thanks, Dick. I appreciate you doing this. And please, reserve your license plates. We need to get to 1,000. I think we'll do it. I don't, I don't really think it should be that tough, but it's kind of an interesting looking plate and it's different. So please, call in and, and reserve one. Appreciate it. And thank you again, Dick. Okay, let's move on to 7.2, presentation on the summary and conclusion of the 79th regular session of 2017 Nevada Legislature. Let me see. On the conclusion and the 79th. So the conclusion is, they probably shut down for the two years, right? They're done. And they're not coming back for two years. Somebody suggested that instead of them meeting every two years for 120 days, they should meet every 120 years for two days. Might be, might be a little more, more advantageous or, never mind. I digress. Please, go ahead, Kathy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. For the record, I'm Kathy Cluett. I'm wearing my legislative liaison hat today. With me is Rocky Fenseth, who is the Principal with Carrera Nevada, Jenny Reese, who's a Vice Principal, or Vice President of Carrera Nevada, is back there as well, as is Heather Lunsford, who's Director of Governmental Affairs. Carrera Nevada is our legislative lobbyist partners for Nevada, and we are thrilled to have them, and we really appreciate them every year. They have a lot of insight for us and they really do help the city behind the scenes. First of all, I'd like to thank the city manager for the opportunity to get back into the legislative role. I do love this. And second of all, I'd like to thank all of the staff, a lot of them that are sitting here, and a lot that I'm sure are avidly watching on their computers, that promptly responded to all the emails requesting clarification or explanation on bills. The legislature pumps out about 1,200 of them. I do have a habit of scanning, reading, and making sure if I think it's going to apply to us, if I think it's going to apply, out it goes to department heads or staff. And they are the experts in everything. I know it's I know it's not fun being interrupted for staff. Everybody's very busy, and they get, you know, some of the bills that drop, they are so out of left field that you just kind of shake your head and wonder what's happening. But we got to make sure that the city is going to be in a good position for it, so we always do have to read them. But your staff is definitely the experts, and they are the best at what they do, bar none. They were absolutely looked upon as experts for quite a number of issues that came up. So with that, let's get started. If you have any questions, please feel free to just interrupt Rocky or I while this is going on. And here we go.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Rocky Finseth, for the record with Carrera Nevada. It's a pleasure to be with you folks today. So the, the session was interesting and unique, probably best way to put it. It was a very partisan, interesting and unique.
Interesting and unique.
I'm not going to go as far as you're going.
Let me make sure I understood.
Not a good day.
It was a very partisan environment, and there was a lot of efforts underway to unwind a lot of the legislation that was passed in 2015. Consequently, Governor Sandoval exercised a very robust veto pen. He issued 41 vetoes in total. That is the second most vetoes used by a governor in the history of this, in our state. And included in that were issues like changes to collective, collective bargaining and and construction defect. Kathy is going to walk you through. I'm not repeating that, Mr. Mayor.
That was very appropriate though. Timing, timing is everything.
Kathy is going to take you through some specific pieces of legislation that, that was on our watch during the 79th session of the legislature.
Okay, with that, our first and foremost bill was the Sparks Charter Change Bill. This was sponsored by Senator Ratty, and it didn't quite sail through. It was fine on the Senate side. It got to the Assembly side, and there were all kinds of questions on our very simple change of changing to make the judge an actual attorney, which our judges are in our municipal court. So it wasn't, we weren't asking for something that was going to put any duress on anybody, but there were a lot of changes or a lot of questions on the Republican side in the Assembly. The bill squeaked through on the Assembly side, and then the governor did sign it, so that was a good thing. The RTC changes, this bill allows the board to include our mayor. Currently, it's not structured as such. Now it will be. And the rest of the bill, it was a long one, only concerned Clark County, that they were able to impose a sales tax and develop a high capacity transportation system. So we only had one little sliver in that bill, and it did go through, so we're happy about that. The Flood Control Bill, it's been copied on the Washto County One process from 2015. It's establishing a committee. They're supposed to recommend fiscal changes, except for a sales tax increase that was taken out on the Assembly side. And then they put recommendations on the next ballot. The mayor does get to appoint one committee member to be on this committee from the City of Sparks. Parks and Trails Bill would allow the city to participate in a park or trail district that is within or across differing jurisdictions. It's enabling legislation. The council could ever decide to do this or not do it. That's okay. Oh, I forgot, I have to push the button. Okie dokes. Another bill was the Main Street Bill. This allows the state to apply for and distribute funds to counties, cities, and nonprofits to further the community and economic revitalization and development of aging business districts and neighborhoods. This is run under the State Office of Economic Development, and this is enabling, and this would be a really good thing for Victorian Square. So this is something that groups can get together and work on. This is actually something that's federally funded, and they fund it all the time, and they actually fund it with a lot of money. They believe strongly in this one. Body cameras for police. The complete fiscal impact is unknown. It actually doesn't start until July 1st, 2018. They gave it a year. The money will be allocated from the county. We don't know how much. What's going to happen is all the surcharges that you have on your 911 system, whether it's your landline, your cell phone, trunk lines, all of that, the rates are all going to go up to help pay for this body camera.
Kathy, we have a question. Go ahead.
Kathy, and Rocky, I saw in the paper today, and I don't know what city it was in, but there's an app out there that they use on their cell phones now that, that would be a lot cheaper, cheaper and, and do the same work as a body camera. Have you seen that? Chief, have you seen that?
She was giving all the tech and all the technology that's on.
Okay. Just a comment, you know.
Well, the good news is there's been a board appointed that's going to be appointed to oversee this program, and your chief of police is one of the members of the board. That was written statute. So he's definitely going to be on it and figure it out. The other thing is that the, the money can only go up to $5 million within the county. So if it actually, if all these rate increases start creating more money, they actually have to back it off. They're only allowed to have $5 million in the bank account for it, which I thought was interesting that they'd put a limit on it. Yes.
I know, Kathy, too, we were concerned about the way the money flowed in. Is that part of what that panel's going to look at?
I think the panel's going to have a lot of discretion.
Didn't we think it was going to be like 400,000 for us to outfit our police department with cameras? If I'm remembering numbers from weeks ago.
Yeah, it's a little foggy for me as well. Rocky Finseth, for the record, a little foggy for me as well, but I believe that, that was about the price.
We're going to, hopefully, the committee understands, we want the money before we go out and purchase cameras because we don't have $400,000 laying around.
Rocky Finseth, for the record, we made that very clear to Senator Ford as he was, he was the primary sponsor of this and as he was working through that.
Okay. Another bill was MOST Bill. This is your Mobile Outreach Safety Team. These are, this is what allows certified social workers to go out with the police officers. They have to go through a phenomenal amount of training to do this. They have to wear flak jackets. They're, you know, they don't carry a gun, but they're out there for the entire shift for, on someone's patrol. Right now, there's only two of them, and we were successful during the session behind the scenes. We were able to take that whole program out of the state's jurisdiction, and it's now residing on the county level, which is better. They're better situated to, to monitor this and go forward. What this money is allowing us to do, over 400,000, they're going to be able to hire like four to six more caseworkers that can go out with the officers. Right now, Sparks, we only get an officer once a week on Tuesday, so we're hoping that this is going to allow us to have more workers that are able to go out with the police officers. And the other benefit is because it's at the county level, they already have it in their social services department, that they have people that can then follow up. So what our officers find a lot of times is they're actually following up. They know that there's certain people. They know when their meds are running low. They've been going out to these people's houses and making sure that they're, they've been taking them to the pharmacy to get their prescriptions filled. The counties should be able to be taking a lot of that off of our officers so that they're now out doing what they should be doing as officers. So we're really excited about this, that they funded this. This was not out of the blue, but it was, at the last minute is, I mean, it literally got passed out on the very last day, June 6th. So we're really happy that this made it. Another subject that was hot and heavy this session was property taxes. The only one that made it through is SJR 14, which was sponsored by Senator Ratty. Because it's a constitutional change, this will have to come forward again in the 2019 session, pass both houses, and then it will become a ballot question in 2020, and then it would have to come back to this, to the legislative body in '21, probably to tweak it, finalize it, write up the regs, do whatever it needs to be done. So that's the earliest you would see anything happen on property tax unless they just, lo and behold, do something in the next session, which would be a lovely thing. What this bill is proposing to do is that the property would adjust after a sale and that the abatement would not stay with the house, which is what happens now. And there are also tax refund things in there for people that are over 62 and have disabilities. So that was one way to soften the constitutional change. Any questions on that? One of the other things that we always have a concern with are when they make changes to PEB. And the reason you see these three puppies like this is this was pretty much what my face looked like when this bill dropped on June 1st, when all the Republicans had walked off the Senate floor to go have tea with the governor. That's what I'm calling it. There was not a Republican in sight. That's what I'm calling it. With no Republicans on the floor of the Senate, the Senate met behind the bar, the Senate Finance Committee. So there, it was, you know, just the Democrats that were there. They dropped two bills, SB 551 and 552. 551 didn't impact local government. And as you're leaning over the bar, literally trying to hear what they're saying, because you're not allowed to be down there, you just have to be quiet and listen, all I caught was, and at the end of the fifth year, local government will be paying 100%. And I, that's what I looked like, was the puppies.
So you were leaning over the bar.
That's when I was leaning over the bar, and, yeah, that's what I was trying to do. So this bill rolled out on the first. It was passed on the third or the fourth, I think. What this really is, the fiscal impact, we're not quite sure what's going to happen. It's for every local government. This was every city, every county in the state, not just us. We in Sparks currently have about 33 people that we think this is going to impact. Our Finance Director and HR are in the works of figuring out what this really means to us. But if we use those numbers, then it's about a 60,000 a year, 66,000 a year increase to the city. The good news about this is we have, we think we have 33 people. This starts going down every year because once people start aging out and get to 65, they have to go to Medicare, so they fall out of this.
Kathy, I'm confused. What are we paying for? What is the PEBP and who were the, is it an insurance? Is it insurance?
This was health insurance, and this was, the, the legislature created a couple of bubbles when they made some health insurance changes back in 2007, and then they, they keep tweaking this PEB system. So what happened is every even year, people that retired in Sparks but went to the state health insurance system, in the even year, they can come back to our system, right? So this is basically, there's still 33 people that went out, and they have not yet come back into Sparks. They can only do it on an even year. Every year, we get, I don't know, 10 people that come back every even year. That's why this number is fluctuating. We don't know if it's really 33. And they also technically age out at 65, because once they're 65, we're no longer the primary. Medicare's the primary. We become secondary. So that changes the numbers, too.
We'd be paying 100% did you say?
After five years. So there's no increase starting July 1. The state's still picking up all of it. The next year, the next July 1, we pick up 25% of what it would cost, then it's 50, 75. So by 2022, it's 100% of whoever's out there.
Ponzi scheme.
And the counties were very excited about this because they have way more people than we do. We have very little on that system.
How does that work when you call half of the group out? So if I wanted something passed here, I could kidnap a couple of these councilmen and put them in a closet somewhere, and we can get something passed here. Is that how that works?
Let's see. So the first amendment says that I don't have to reply. I'm not quite sure how that works. That was not part of my law school stuff. All right, so your purchasing manager, Dan Maron, was way, way on top of what was going on this legislative session. He is quite the leader behind the scenes. All of the other purchasing division people, including in the state, actually subscribe. Dan kind of puts a little letter together, updates it every week of what's going on and what could impact on the purchasing impact. So Dan Maron's fabulous at this, and he really knows the subject matter, and he is quite the expert, and I relied on him a lot. He was great. So one of the bills they passed was to certify applicators of people that put down pesticides. It only affects local governments and state workers. We don't know what the fiscal impact is going to be because we're not, you know, they haven't really, they fleshed out the bill, yes, but it's, it's in some department within the state, and they're going to come out and tell us, okay, this is what it really means when they get to it. So we don't know what's going to cost if we have to have people get all kinds of training because they're out at the parks laying down pesticides. We're not sure.
Aren't they already certified? If they're pest control? You think they'd be certified by the state?
I don't know, and I don't know if these are like new regs on top of it. They did a lot of that this year. They created new regs to sometimes solve problems that weren't really there. And new departments, actually. They created a couple of new departments in the state for that same purpose. So that's why we're not sure how this is going to be impacted, because that's, that was basically the testimony was, but we do that. So.
Their license and they get tested every year?
Correct. Yep. Another one that came out was, this is a brand new position, a Minority Affairs Management Analyst. We're not quite sure what the fiscal impact is going to be because we're not quite sure what they're analyzing. And this is another incidence of trying to create a solution to a problem that isn't found yet. So we're not sure what was the impetus behind this and where it's probably going to end up. So we don't quite know how this is going to flow.
These all passed and they weren't vetoed?
These two passed and were not vetoed, which brings me to my next comment, which is lots of bills died. There were a lot of bills like this out there, and they died concerning bitter preferences and prevailing wages, which is a good thing because those always really hurt the city. And like I said, a big thank you to Dan Maron because he was instrumental in keeping track of all these. So healthcare, there were a lot of bills about healthcare this year. Local government impact specifically for healthcare and coverage, we have such a good program here at the city, we're not impacted. There's a lot of other places that are, but we were not one of them. One of the bills that does impact is the Domestic Violence Bill. The Domestic Violence Bill, it provides 160 hours of unpaid leave to victims of domestic violence. It may or may not run concurrent with an FMALA, depending on circumstances, and really we see this as an impact to the city, that it's going to be a decrease in staffing. But we don't know how, we don't really, this has never been an issue for us, and this has not been, so we just don't know how this is going to impact us fiscally or hourly. We're just not quite sure how this is going to roll out. Another bill concerning workman's comp was AB 267. This is an interesting bill. There's, there's discussion on whether this is really going to impact cities and counties or not. Our thought is that it ill is because the bill imposes a 200-per-day benefit penalty to an employer for a police fire work comp come, work comp come, work comp claim under heart, lung, cancer if the claim is denied and the employee ultimately prevails. This is, this is one of those, and the governor did sign this, that it's going back to, it's presuming that the city shouldn't be saying no to any claims. The problem is some claims come through, and, and part of the due diligence is you have to wait for the expert, whether it's a surgeon or whoever, to give you back the paperwork to say, yes, this really was a problem, and here's how we're going to have to fix it. The problem is most of those requests to get the paper back and forth go well over 90 days, and this starts ticking on the first day. So they don't even want to give you the 90 days anymore, and then if it turns out that the employee actually does prevail, there's penalties for all of those days, and this can run up for a whole year. So you could be in excess of $60,000 on one claim on this if it, if everything is aligned correctly for it going through. Our HR thought we had quite a lot of claims that went through this because we normally do, we wait for the paperwork to come back. Well, by then, that 90-day clock, according to this, is already ticking. So we're just waiting to see what's going to happen with this. And then another bill was the Criminal History Bill. This, we're going to feel this impact because you are not allowed now to ask somebody, this is called getting rid of the check the box. So on a lot of application forms, it's have you, do you have a criminal history, and you check the box yes, box yes. That's gone now. You can't do that as of July 1. The impact will be felt when we put someone in a background check, and then you basically are right there to give them the job offer, and you do the background check, and whatever their issue was will directly impact what this job application was about. So now we have to start all over again. So it might be a timing issue for when we have to, you know, go out and get, do applications for people.
But it requires not to be able to do background checks, right? It doesn't, it just says we can't ask.
Can't ask about it until the last minute. Additionally, we will, we will be fined by NERC, N-E-R-C. I do not know what that stands for, if we fail to properly notify an applicant that he has been disqualified for the position. So we just have to be on top of our procedures, and HR is. I don't, that's not going to be a problem. So there is some fun that happens down in the legislature. So there is some fun that happens down in the legislature. You can now drive 80 on parts of 80. This was a big deal, everybody had the big, big 80 road signs, they were all excited about it, some of them have already been showing up out east. There were four bills, four, two in the Senate, two on the Assembly, to control driving in the left lane. You are only allowed to be in the left lane if you're going to pass.
Absolutely.
Now you can get a ticket. If you're, if you get in the left lane and go 65, and you're blocking traffic, you can get a ticket now.
80 miles an hour in that lane, you got to be able to go fast enough.
I get it, exactly.
So everyone's clear, so even if you're going the speed limit?
Out of the way.
And you're in that lane, you can get a ticket?
Out of the way. If it's a two-lane highway, I don't think that's true. I think this applies to three lanes or more, that you should not be in the left lane unless you are truly passing. So if you want to be the point person and get the ticket, go.
Just follow me.
And another one was, there were a lot of animal bills at this legislative session, and one of the ones that did pass was that you cannot leave your pets in the car. I guess, it's a real problem down in Las Vegas, they're cracking windows all the time to get the pets out and save the pets.
Especially if you're in the third lane.
Don't do it if you're in the third lane, don't park your car there either, that's a bad thing. Good news, State CIP, they funded a lot of things this year. So in Northern Nevada, we're going to get the Northern Nevada State Veterans Home, over on the NAMs campus off of Gillette. The groundbreaking is July 10th, you've all accepted to that already, most of you. So that's, that's a really good thing, the campus, the way they have it set up is terrific. Their view on it, I mean, it's, it's, it's really, it's a good project, and I'm glad they gave money for it. There's going to be a new DMV in Reno, it's going to be in the Damone Ranch area. The thought is to not make this a secondary or equal, they're going to close the one on Gillette, and they're moving everything down south. When is that going to happen? Who knows? They have purchasing issues that they have to get through. I believe it's supposed to be online in like, two or three years, is when it would come up. And University of Nevada is getting a new engineering school. They got $42 million, and the school's supplying $43 million. As an aside, the DMV, that's costing 42 million, and the Nevada Veterans Home is 34 million is what the funding is. They've already prepaid for a lot of things, so they're actually getting some money back. So there's, it's not 34 million, it's more than that, but that's what this bill was covering. Everybody's favorite subject. So there were a lot of changes on the medical side, and there were a lot of changes, recreational is new now. The big, one of the biggest ones was, it's transferring responsibility to the Department of Tax. Department of Tax has been very involved in writing the new regulations they've passed. My understanding is, there's still a stay on the distribution, that didn't get satisfied that last Tuesday. This was an interesting subject this year, this took a lot of everybody's time, legislators, everybody that was down there, there, every week, there was something new happening that you had to keep on, on top of. They started with over 23 bills on this subject, they ended with four. Of notable death was the pots club bill. They were worried that people would fly here, especially down in Vegas, go and buy their pot, because it's recreational, you can't smoke it in the hotel, you're only allowed to smoke it in your house, you cannot smoke it on the street, that all still is true. So they wanted to come up with these pot clubs, so that you could buy it, go somewhere, smoke it, and then go walk out on, on the strip, I guess. So. The difference in the taxes, medical wholesale tax and recreational is 15%. Recreational used to be 2, it's going to 15. That's with the cultivation. All of that 15% that the state gets, all the, that 15% excise tax for the state goes to the state, it's to pay for the cost of running the program, i.e., the Department of Tax is supposed to just get all the money to help them do their regulations and enforcement and things. Local governments were supposed to get some of it, too, and what they ended up doing was, they capped local governments at $5 million. That's for the entire state. What the regs are, and how, as a city, we would go and ask the state for some of this money back to help what it's costing us to regulate marijuana in our city, no one knows, those regs have not been written yet, so we don't know how it's going to happen, or what it's going to look like, but they did cap it. So if this 15% tax garners the state $20 million a year, we're only going to get five.
We say we get five.
Cities and counties.
Split of bounds, every city, so we get.
Everybody. Get 5 million. That's the cap for the entire fund.
So Kathy, that's out of the, that's out of the 15% that the state is collecting?
Correct.
Separate from what local jurisdictions decide if any decisions made on what tax are fees?
And I give you that.
Okay, thank you.
That 15% is a wholesale tax on the cultivators. As a city, the most we can charge for an excise tax is 3%, and you're going to be getting that in your discussion coming later on, what the changes are for the, our muni codes. So I'm not even going to get into that, because I know Karen's got that covered. There's no tax on dispensaries now, so any of the people that are making the candies, whoever, there's no tax on them. On the retail side, the state is taxing it at 10%, and local governments can get no more than 3%. So out of that 10%, that's where a lot of the controversy on the last four or five days of session happened, when they did not pass the school bill, and the Republicans walked out, and then some of the other bills, they needed the 2/3 majority, the bills didn't pass because there were no Republicans on the floor. Everything blew up on Thursday afternoon, by Saturday morning, Saturday night, it was pretty much done. And these were some of the give and takes, and that 10% is now getting rolled over to the DSA, the distributive school account for the state, to pay for schools. Of note, SB 329 is allowing medical research, because they've never been able to do that, and UNR was very adamant that they wanted to be able to start doing research on it if they, since we're going to have it in the state. And then people were throwing of hemp, and they made a lot of medical card changes as well. So a lot of the marijuana things Karen will cover in another item after me. Are there any questions about that? Okay. This is one of the only interim studies that we kind of cared about, this was a bill dropped at the last minute about off-road vehicles. We didn't like it, nobody liked it, and it was basically, some people wanted to be able to just pull off any road, i.e. Pyramid Highway, or out on Los Altos, or at the end of GURP, leave their trailers and things there, and then just get off and start going on their off-road vehicle. We had concerns with that, counties had concerns with that, so they softened a lot of the language, and they ended up turning it into an interim study for the session, for during the interim to the next session. So we didn't have to fight it that much.
Any questions? Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, Rocky Finseth, for the record, we're less than 30 days out from leaving the Capitol, but you're already seeing positioning by, particularly over in the state Senate, folks like Senator Sagerblum are going to be leaving the Senate and running for the County Commission. Senator Ford is looking at running for Attorney General. Senator Hardy is looking at running for the County Commission. Senator Menendez is looking at running for the County Commission. Senator Roberson is running for Lieutenant Governor. So you've already got a lot of cast of characters who will be either moving on or moving, moving on to a local government capacity, or moving up into constitutional offices. At the end of the day, we do expect the Democrats will control in 2019, both, continue to control both houses, which makes the governor's race between presumably Attorney General Laxalt and Clark County Commissioner Steve Sisalak, a pretty high-profile race in 2018.
They do it backwards down in Vegas and Clark County, they start at the top and then go down, County Commissioner, Council, or whatever, instead of starting at the bottom and learning something before they go down there and make an ass out of themselves. Any questions for Kathy or Rocky? Okay.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to consent items, 8-1 through 8-5, I've been on, full of consent items. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion, please. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.5.
Byby, I'm sorry. Donald is good, okay. We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Abbott, to approve the consent items. Any further discussion?
Seeing none, please vote.
Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to general business, please. 9.1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointments to the Civil Service Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Let's just crandle Gregorio, Rainey, Michael, Rainey, and Rita. And I have selected Rita Gregario and Michael Rainey as the two appointments to the Civil Service Commission. Questions from the council, Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded, and the first instance by Mr. Lawson, to approve 9.1. Any further discussion?
Seeing none, please vote.
Passed unanimously. Okay, 9.2, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of applications to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have a number of names there, and the recommendations are Laura Bayer, Thomas Lean, and David Sexton. Questions from the commission, the council? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve.
Second, Mr. Dare.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Dare, to approve the 9.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Now, I know there were, on the first one, was there anyone here that wanted to say a few words that got appointed? Okay, how about Parks and Rec? I know Laura Bayer's here, would you like to say a few words, Laura? Or any of the other people here that would like to say something? Come on down, Laura. Don't be bashful, you're going to be on TV here pretty soon, too.
Facebook Live. Laura Bayer, for the record, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for your favorable, occasional contribution. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering, Laura.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, let's go to 9.3, consideration of the possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of the appointment of James Fueens to the Parks and Recreation Commission for the following potential appointees, Mary Brock, Scott Carey, James Fueens, and James Gaba. Questions? I'm recommending James Fueens, any questions? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion, Mr. Dare.
I move to approve.
Do we have a second? Mr. Abbott?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Abbott, to approve 9.3, as recommended by the mayor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 9.4, consideration, discussion, and possible appointment to the Regional Planning Governing Board for the remainder of the two-year, three-year, two, three-year terms from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Donald Abbott, Christopher Dare, and Ron Smith, for Posital Action, and I am recommending that we appoint Donald Abbott to take my place on the Regional Planning Governing Board for a term that will end 6/30/18. I feel it's my, my turn to get off, since I've been there since 1999, I've been on that board. And it's time for someone younger to take the reins and learn something about regional planning, so I'm recommending Donald Abbott. Questions, Mr. Smith?
You can do the alternate also at the same time, or is that in a separate motion?
Yeah, I have the same time, the alternate will be Christopher Dare, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Byby, to approve Donald Abbott as the...
Does it say alternate on that?
Does it?
So we have to put an alternate on there?
We have it.
The agenda is, I have to do that, just for the alternate, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, I changed my motion then, for Donald Abbott. Second? Agree?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Byby, to appoint Donald Abbott to the Regional Planning Governing Board. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, thanks, and thanks all of you that have volunteered to do this, I appreciate it. And thank you, Donald, for wanting to jump in, you'll have a lot of fun on it this one, I'll tell you.
The remainder is two, three-year terms. Hey, Chip?
Yes.
It says two, three-year terms on the whole agenda. Remainder of two, three-year terms.
Is that co-terminous?
Yeah, should be.
It's co-terminous, so.
So does it need to specify position and?
No, you're all right.
It goes till 6/30/18, yeah.
Because alternate wasn't...
Yeah.
The remainder of two, three-year terms. So it's two terms, one for the position and one for the alternate. Does it need to say alternate? Does it ever come after that?
You can't expand the jurisdiction by a, by an agenda item, so you can, you'll have to...
We had to appoint two.
It only says one on there.
Right here, remainder of two, three-year terms.
I agree. So the gene only has a year and a half left? Governor, or?
Appointments for the remainder of two, three-year terms.
It is, it is, it is plural. It's plural.
It's saying, in the agenda item, we've got to appoint two for three-year terms.
It's, it's plural, you got two, three-year terms, arguably it, it applies, but folks, why buy trouble? Just, just put it in there, it's confusing as to, as to whether or not it relates to two, let's just do one, and then we'll re-agendize it for an alternate.
Okay.
Any problems with that?
Okay, nope.
Okay. Thanks, Chip. Moving on, 9.5, consideration, possible adoption of Resolution Number 3313 to augment the fiscal year 2016-17 budget in the Parks and Rec Fund and the Motor Vehicle Maintenance Fund. Mr. Kronk, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do this every year, we try to come before you, either the last meeting before the end of the fiscal year, or the second to last, and we kind of pushed it as long as we could this year, just because there's so many things going on. But fortunately, we only have two augmentations that we want to bring to you this year, one being in the Parks and Rec Fund, and one being in the Motor Vehicle Fund. Fortunately, we've known about these, so these aren't, these aren't new to us, these were presented to you in the City Manager's Budget Recommendations, and also, they're included in the final budget for fiscal 18, as far as the fiscal 17 estimates that are part of that fiscal 18 process. So, so these aren't new, you know, as far as what we were expecting, and ultimately, in the Parks and Rec Fund, that does not change the transfer that's coming over from the general fund, so, so no change on there. And in the Motor Vehicle Fund, it's related to depreciation and rising fuel costs that we didn't anticipate a year ago, when we filed the 17 budget. So essentially, what we have before you today is just to comply with state regulations about how to manage our budget, so the resolution and the attached forms meet that compliance requirement. Should you choose to approve it today? And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Kronk. Okay, there was a motion.
I have one question, one, so this is up and above, what was already, I, I, I thought, when I read this, I thought this had to do with the already things in the manager's budget, where we want to...
Take that money out of there, but we are, because of what's happening at GURP.
We included it in the City Manager's Budget Recommendation, what's over and above on this is, these were items that were not included in the current, final budget that was filed for fiscal 17 a year ago. So just in order to, to maintain compliance with state law, we have to come back at some point during the fiscal year to, to present an augmentation of that budget request before the, before the governing board, in this case, our council. We do it as late in the year as possible, because we, we just don't know how many, you know, budget violations that we're trying to comply with throughout the year. That may happen between the time of the City Manager's Recommendations and the time we file the budget and, and the end of the fiscal year, yeah.
I move, then I do move to adopt Resolution Number 3313 to augment the FY17 budgets of the Parks and Rec and Motor Vehicle Maintenance Funds. Yes.
Ms. Byby?
I'll second, and I do have a question. So do we have money in the budget to cover these?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they were included in the budget that we filed for fiscal '18. So if you remember, we have to file a fiscal '18 budget, and part of that budget is an estimate in what fiscal '17 is going to be. But estimate is different than the actual budget that was filed, so this is just a formal action to amend the '17 budget, which we already included in our estimates.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Just want to make sure we have the money. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dare, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. 9.6, excuse me, 9.6, consideration and possible acceptance of a 2016 Department of Homeland Security Assistance Firefighter's Grant, AFGAC 5378, in the amount of $117,148 to purchase four 12 lead defibrillators to support the fire department's paramedic program. Go ahead, Chief. How are you?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, council members. For the record, I'm Fire Chief Chris Maples, and with me is the department's EMS coordinator, Captain Ed McDonald. Before you today is Agenda Item 9.6, which seeks your approval to accept an assistance to firefighter's grant to purchase four 12 lead defibrillators to support our paramedic program. These units will replace four aging defibrillators that don't have the capabilities to provide advanced cardiac monitoring needed under the paramedic program. The total amount of the grant is $117,148, which includes $106,499 in federal funds and city funds of $10,649. Funds are available in the fiscal year '18 budget to cover the city's share of the grant. Section 7 of Council Resolution 2034 requires grant awards of $5,000 or more to be brought before you for approval, and this agenda item satisfies that requirement. I'd like to note that we applied for a similar grant in 2015, but were unsuccessful in getting it, so I feel very fortunate that we have it this year. That concludes my presentation, and Captain McDonald and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the chief, Mr. Dare.
I want to thank you for the other day. That was awesome, seeing the pinning of your new fireman. I think we all mentioned how it's wonderful to see these guys coming on with such experience. It really is...
Yeah, and all five of those, as I said, were paramedics, and they were hired specifically to...
It's wonderful, and I think we should fund things like this more often, where we pay 10%, and the government pays the rest. I think, I mean, the federal pays the rest.
I couldn't agree with you more.
That's awesome, so... Well, the federal government, sorry.
Heard a hell.
The federal. There you go.
Depending on how many strings are attached.
Well, you never know. I move to accept the 2016 assistance to firefighter's grant in the amount of $117,148, which includes $106,499 in federal funds and $10,649 in city funds.
Motion by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve Agenda Item 9.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief. Thanks. In 9.7, consideration and possible approval of $470,000 for contracted laborers in Parks and Street Maintenance Community Service Crew during fiscal year '18. Go ahead, Ron.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the council. Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager, for the record. Councilman Smith, to answer your question, yes, all of our pesticide applicators are duly licensed by the State of Nevada Department of Agriculture. Today...
I knew that.
Today, I'm before you to request spending authority of $470,000 to pay for contracted labor through various temporary staffing agencies. The city utilizes staffing agencies that have been qualified through the State of Nevada The Bid Process. In fiscal year '17, Public Works utilized contracted labor to perform various tasks, including trash pickup, restroom cleaning, mowing, weed control, crack ceiling, street patching, filling potholes, cleaning alleys, data entry, and utility work in the city garage. To date, in fiscal year '17, Public Works has spent $424,378 on contracted labor. This breaks down to approximately 24,800 hours at $16.50 an hour. In addition to the contracted labor, these funds were used to pay for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for inmate work crews, a little different program that we had this current year than what we have coming up. The cost for 24,800 hours for full-time employees would be approximately $1,077,312. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Corman. Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the use of contracted labor in the amount of $470,000 for FY '18.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Abbott, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve Agenda Item 9.7 for Parks and Rec, $470,000. Any further discussion? Obviously not, seeing none. All in favor? Yes.
Thank you very much.
Passed unanimously. Thanks, Ron. You may not vote before I ask the question, okay? Just kidding. You need to speak faster. You're right, I'm a little slow today. In 9.8, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement, AC 5379, with Washoe County for the construction of an additional parking lot at Golden Eagle Regional Park at Little League Fields in the amount of $300,000. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. I am here today to present for consideration and possible approval an interlocal cooperative agreement with Washoe County for the construction of additional parking adjacent to the Little League Fields at Golden Eagle Regional Park. This interlocal agreement will provide up to $300,000 in reimbursement for the construction of a new parking lot north of the existing Little League Fields at Golden Eagle. It would cover the majority of the cost of construction, with the City of Sparks covering the remaining cost of $150,000 that was approved by council on May 22, 2017. With the heavy use of the Little League Fields and minimal parking available near the fields, this is a much-needed project, which is included in the Golden Eagle Regional Park Master Plan. With that being the end of my presentation, I'll answer any questions you may have.
This is a good project. I think when I go out there sometimes, you got people parking in the sagebrush and everywhere.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the more parking we can get out there, the better off we are. That place is unbelievable to people that go out there. It's just unbelievable.
Questions, Mr. Dare?
One question is, so this funding that they gave us, is it possible to ever go after some of that funding to replace some of our field?
Yeah, and that's one thing we actually anticipated, so we looked into it, and this is ultimately the end of the funding available from this tax. This was something that was earmarked back in, I believe, 2013 for this specific project, and they've since used up the funding that's available.
Because obviously, county comes in and has different points of factor. To me, it would seem like that would be one of our revenues that we should talk to them about. I mean, maybe we already are, maybe that's already happening.
Honey, here to... Give us your name for the record, please. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Rosemary Anslinger. I'm the fiscal compliance officer at Washoe County Community Services. The WC-1 bond was passed in the year 2000, and it had a very lengthy list of projects. Those projects are all coming to an end. In 2013, we had sat down with all the various different parties, talked about what their current needs were, and we're looking for all the little bits and pieces of savings from projects in which we had maybe realized a little bit here and a little bit there. So what we did, this was a really critical project that your staff had brought forward and were very large advocates for, we definitely realized that this was a true need out in your community. So what we did is we pieced together all the little parts and pieces of savings in order to accumulate the $300,000. We are essentially at the end of that funding. That project list actually started in the 1980s, so we're way at the tail end of it. What we did, commit to staff, is if we do find any other little bits and pieces of the very last four or four projects that are on the list, we know that you're looking for just a little bit more money, and we will try to do what we can. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion, please? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement with Washoe County for the construction of an additional parking lot at Golden Eagle Regional Park, Little League Fields, in the amount of $300,000.
Do you have a second, Mr. Dare?
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve 9.8 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. I like that. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Next is 9.9, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal cooperative agreement, AC 5380, between the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks for the operation of the Community Assistance Center, CAC, and other homeless services for fiscal year 2018, with Sparks's share being 277,410. Oh, George. Go ahead, George. Go Cleveland, right?
Better.
They lost, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Well, you can hope for baseball now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, George.
Good afternoon. George Graham, House and Specialist, City of Sparks. And today, I bring, present for staff's recommendation for City Council's consideration and approval to, for the interlocal agreement between the jurisdictions for the operation of the Community Assistance Center and homeless services. The origins of the interlocal agreement is nine years back in July of 2008. The mayors of City of Sparks, City of Reno, and the Chair of the County Commission hosted a housing, a homeless summit to address homeless issues in the region, in the community. And the three jurisdictions agreed to a funding formula, which equates to one cent of the property tax equivalent for the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and one-half of a cent for the property tax equivalent for Washoe County. For the coming year, the combined formula, the four-minute formula, the combined funding would be 3.4 million for all jurisdictions. And the City of Sparks level of funding for this particular agreement is $277,640, I believe. Of that money, $96,000 would be from CDBG grant allocation, and it'd be $181,000 from the General Fund for the City of Sparks. And all the items have been budgeted for the coming year. The monies will be used to fund DOA, Volunteers of America, which manage the Community Assistance Center. Their contract could be used for operations of the Community Assistance Center, and the remaining funds will be used for rapid rehousing of homeless personnel, as well as otherwise divert the homeless population to other resources available to them in the So really, those are the high points of the interlo...
Questions for George. Mr. Lawson?
George, this was last year, wasn't it, when they came to us and they wanted an additional $160,000? Or is this the same thing I'm thinking of for the overflow shelter?
Well, this is annually, we do the, the additional for the overflow shelter. That's not exactly, this is not exactly the same agreement, no. Last year, we had an additional $40,000, I know, again, with all three of the jurisdictions.
Added that additional amount. So it's gone up again.
It's gone up. Well, it's gone up, but also in the last couple of years, the triage center, we are no longer funding that. That's coming out of... So the triage center from a couple of years ago, which was like about $87,000 or something, that is no longer a part of what we're funding. So it's been an increase. It has been an increase, but a lot of that is offset by what we used to fund the triage, the triage center.
I thought the main purpose of us upping our contribution was to get an overflow shelter for the men's, and I don't believe that's happened as of today.
I think that's still some discussion.
So now...
Well, the overflow shelter actually is done and filled. Again, it's overflowed, I guess, is what I want to say.
There is actually an overflow shelter that people are going to. Okay. I wasn't aware of that.
So I think, if I'm correct, I think this is a budget to cover everything for next year. Last year, we didn't get everything covered. We went into it half-cocked, kind of, and then to be in the middle of it, we needed some more money to do an overflow shelter. That's when we had to put in, that's when we put in the extra money. This funds the...
Everything for the coming year.
Right? Okay. Is that it, Ed? Mr. Smith?
Thanks, George. Last year, we went to $264,000, is what we did, and we had to, we went to a concurrent meeting in the mob mentality, and that's what I'm gonna call it. We gotta throw more money at it. We gotta throw more money at it. And it's not getting us anywhere. Now, it went up another $13,000 this year to $277,000. When we first started this, our share was $26,000. This is, this is gonna be $5 million.
Nine years ago.
Yeah. This is gonna be $5 million before we can blink an eye, and it keeps going up. So I really have, I really have difficulty with this, and I know that we have to do something about the homeless situation. It's like, it's bad everywhere, but throwing money at it is not the answer. If I knew the answer, you know, you're a pretty smart guy, but this is, this is just gonna go up and up and up, so... Thanks for all you do, George. You do a great job at this.
The only reason I brought up the triage center was some of the offset where previously...
The hospitals used to chip in on this also, but they...
They did. They did.
And the overflow center last year was actually at the WARC building on Sudrow. And when they closed the building, left it open to the overflow shelter, guess who stole all the copper and everything out of that building? Wiped it out, yeah. Took it all, so...
You know, all due respect to Ron, I'm the one that pushed, I think, to raise the amount that we give every year. You know, Reno was putting in plenty, the county was putting in plenty, we were putting in very little, $26,000. And there were several councilmen didn't think we had a homeless problem. Well, that's BS. We have a homeless problem in Sparks. I mean, we went down on the river, and Reno passed an ordinance which shipped them all to Sparks, and in two weeks, we had a homeless problem, and we still have a homeless problem. That's why I lobbied for more money for the homeless, because I didn't think Sparks was putting in their share. Is Ron correct? Is this ever gonna fix it, the money? Probably not, but again, we have to do something, so... Ms. Bybee?
George, as I'm looking at the, how they determined what we're going to be contributing, it looks like because it was based on assessed values, is because our property values have continued to go up, is that basically why our amount increased this year? Because the 2018 Sparks assessed value, property values have got to be higher, so that automatically moved it up because of the formula that you use for that?
One cent, one cent per equivalent.
Okay. So that would explain why the amount, why the amount has gone up, because our assessed value has gone up. Okay. And obviously, the homeless problem is something that affects all of us, and of course, one of the number-one issues we look at in this region is affordable housing. And the affordable housing, and then rent's going up so much, it's forcing people out of housing, which creates more homeless people. So we've got multifaceted problem with not one solution. So we've got multifaceted problem with not one solution. But that was my only question, that I assumed that we're giving more because our property values are higher. Thank you.
Is it possible that you, you could show us where this money's going? Like, could you give us a tour, give me a tour, maybe not everybody, I'm interested, to go and go see this, our homeless shelter? Where, where's our money going? Because we, we do this, we, when we give finances out anywhere, we're very involved in it. It seems that when we have people who, we don't know what's happening, but we're throwing money at it, it seems, that seems unwise, because we have so many other needs as well. And I don't question the homeless. I, I don't, I know there's a huge need there, but it would seem, it would seem really wise for us to go out and get our eyes on seeing what exactly happening.
George, I, I think if you talk to Volunteers of America, whoever's leading the pack over there, or even Pat Kachel now, who's over there with Volunteers of America, if you talk to Pat and put together a little, he'll put together a little tour, I'm sure, or somebody in his organization-
I will. I will.
Pat has been very, 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 very involved in the homeless scene, because you know what? He's been one. So, he knows, and he told me that the best, best places for the homeless are in the warehouses in Sparks. And I said, well, you better stay out, because we don't want you over here. But, no. So I, I think if you get a hold of Pat, he'll do something.
Thank you.
Question I have, too, is this something that, that, because for timing, does this have to be voted on today? Is this something, could we say, let us go look, and then come back and have this conversation? Or is this something that we just, is it at a place where you, or you need to move forward?
Well, um-
Sounds like some of the questions are real.
The timing of it is, it's already had been before. We work collectively, the three jurisdictions, and it's something that we really needed as far as to complete, but if, if we're gonna, if we need to go ahead and organize this tour, I'm sure we could, we will. Well, I'm going to organize the tour. And if coming back, if that's the-
George, you're saying if we, if we put this off for 30 days, would make a big difference, or not? You know, I'm not trying to push any councilman into voting for this or voting against it because of the pressures.
I don't think it'll make too big of a difference. If it's the desire that we have the tour first, I'll come back. I'll come back with this.
I'm gonna have a different opinion for the council. I apologize. John Martini, Community Services Director. As the council will be aware, all of this is already in your budget. The interlocal agreement allows us to start making those payments to our partners. I suggest we don't delay that, as we're just on the brink of the new fiscal year. I think a tour certainly is a good idea. We are committed to this financially and philosophically, so I would, I would urge the council to pass this today.
Thanks, George.
You know, the, I wanna, I don't want to be the bad guy here, but these costs keep going up, and we are not getting any discounts from all the people that, that tutor or work with these folks. We're getting, we're probably the biggest employer now of the psychological departments and everything else, because that's who we're paying, that's where this money's going. Most of it. I mean, I know we have the, the food and the dinners and everything else, and the overflow shelters, but most of it is going to services that they need. And, you know, it's, uh, there's no break there. That's why the hospitals got out of this.
Well, and there is ongoing discussions, I know, on restructuring of, we know that Volunteers of America is the, our vendor, the provider-
Right, right.
-for operations of this. There is some ongoing discussions that I'm not at liberty to speak-
I understand that.
...finalized, uh, but I-
But, George, isn't this something different than the triage center? That's what the hospital-
Oh, well, yes, I brought the triage, exactly.
The hospital's putting 500,000.
Yes.
It's all the same thing. We still have the triage center.
They still put in the money for the triage center. So they haven't completely gone away.
That is offset, like I was saying.
That was Mr. Dare. The budget.
And then show us the budget, where our money's going. How many other, by the way, I just have a question. How many other groups do we contribute to, in this, in this amount?
Nothing in this amount. Do we?
Not that I can figure it.
A lot of it's done to other committees. For instance, cloud seeding and, and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the council can take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson, question?
Well, I just, I got a concern, and I'm gonna kind of echo Ron's concerns, is that, and my understanding is that they want to change and morph this, this board into something else now to actually take up affordable housing, which only says to me that they're gonna come for more money, and more money, and more money each year. So, I, I'm just, I think an accounting is a wonderful thing. We need to do that. This money right here is important, I think, that we, we, we fund it. And I have no problem funding it for Mr. Martini's sake, but I, I'm gonna tell you, this was, uh, this was a big concern of mine last year, and here it shows up this again this year, and it'll be a concern next year when it comes back, and it's over 300,000. And we've morphed in and out providing homes for homeless people. And so I can see this transitioning to becoming a big deal, and I just don't want to get there.
There's discussions ongoing now, where, which would be lessening the provider, the, the DOA provider, and I'm just saying that some of that is not finalized.
I get that, but I, you can see from, the trend is there to keep increasing. So I, I'm just concerned about it, but I agree that with the mayor, we gotta get this done, and I don't-
You know, I can, I can say it's not for my benefit, obviously, but it's something I think we should do. And I was gonna make one more point, and I forgot, but I think- Did you have something, Christopher, and then Mr. Crutz? Neil?
From the staff perspective, we're happy to provide an accounting of where the money that we've spent in this past year has gone. I believe in the staff report, we show you where the money is planned to go in the coming year. So, George will work on that through Mr. Martini. We'll route it up to all of you, so that you, you can see that. And then to, to tag on to some of George's comments, as we are talking about where to go with the Transitional Governing Board and homeless issues in general, you know, to, to also fold in the- Could we be making better uses of those monies? Those are conversations that all three managers are having with their staffs. This is an issue that we are working on, trying to put together a plan that we can bring forward for your consideration as we get later into the summer and into the fall. Because we understand that while we need to be doing these things, that, you know, perhaps there's a, a better way we can do this, we can leverage the funding that we do have, and, and get a better bang for our buck, and, and we're committed to working on it.
Secondly, if we have new things come forward next year for homeless or whatever we have to fund, we can vote on those next year, and we can always vote no next year if this is too much, or we think it's going up too high. We can always vote no next time. Mr. Dare.
With all that said, I, I'll move to approve as-is, but I, I do think that it, we have to, in this year, because I remember last year, sitting out there, listening to this as you guys went through this, actually, even the year before, I remember sitting out there, and this was going through. And so we have to have, the counting's good, and eyes on is good. So we can stand in front of anybody and say, this is where your tax money went. That's, that's what we have to have. Because if not, then we keep coming, and, and we appreciate all the work you do, and obviously, it's, it's great work, but it needs, so. I move to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Reno, Washoe County, and City of Sparks for the operation of the Community Assistance Center and other homeless services for fiscal year 2018, with Sparks's share being 277,410.
Second, Ms. Bybee.
A second and a comment. These are homeless people that are Sparks residents, too, or people who are here in Sparks. This isn't somebody else's problem. It's not just Reno or the county. These are people in Sparks. And then if they're not homeless, they're people that are impacting our residents in Sparks, whether it's our families who can't go down to the river, or it's other, you know, the homeless situation impacts the quality of life for all of our residents here. So I think this is important, and I don't have an easy solution. I don't think it's an overnight solution, regardless of how much funding you put into it, but I think it is important, and I appreciate, Mr. Crutz, the, the fact that you guys are working to get the best money. We can leverage the money the best way we can, and hopefully make some headway with this program and with the funding that all three jurisdictions are making. So I second and support the motion.
Motion by Mr. Dare, seconded by Ms. Bybee. Any other questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one. Thank you.
Follow up with the tour scheduling and the accounting.
Call Pat Kachel, he'll, he'll, he'll get you, get you set up.
Thank you all.
Okay, 9.10, consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of a business impact statement regarding proposed amendments to Title V of the Sparks Municipal Code entitled Business Licenses, Taxes, and Regulations pertaining to the Licensing Requirements and Establishment of Fees for Medical Marijuana Establishments to Operate at Retail.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager, before you today to discuss the business impact statement. On April 10th of 2017, the city council, you directed the city manager to examine the city's business licensing and zoning ordinances, and prepare code amendments to enable the city to permit existing medical marijuana businesses to operate as non-medical marijuana establishments, or recreational, or also known as at retail. Before you today are companion items. There is a first reading for an amendment to Title V and amendments to Title 20. The Title 20, or a zoning code, amendments permits existing medical marijuana establishments to cultivate, produce, test, or sell marijuana, either be medical or at retail or recreational, which does not require a business impact statement. The business license, or Title V, code amendments propose a new fee for a at-retail marijuana cultivation, production, sales, and we're adding a new use of distribution. Accordingly, NRS 237 obligates the city to prepare a business impact statement, or BIS, which the city council must consider at a regular city council meeting. Today's item is the consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of the BIS pertaining to the code amendments in Title V. In the proposed Title V amendments, if an existing medical marijuana establishment, also referred to as 453A, wants to operate as a medical marijuana facility, then the fee structure does not change, nor does the fee structure change for testing labs. Title V amendments adds a new section, which is Section 5.80.195, license fees for retail medical, retail marijuana establishments. License fees at retail for cultivation, production, sales, and distribution of marijuana and marijuana-infused products are one-time application fee of 3,000, and for each quarter, based on the business gross receipts of the previous quarter, an additional fee of the maximum amount allowed by the state of Nevada. At the time of preparing and submitting the staff report for the BIS and the code amendments of Title V and Title 20, the maximum amount allowed by the state was not known. So in Title 20, we use the word maximum amount allowed by the state of Nevada. Since the filing of the staff report for today's presentation, the legislature passed and was signed by the governor, establishes the maximum amount at 3% of the gross rev, gross revenue sales. On May 22nd, a questionnaire for the preparation of the business impact statement was mailed to 28 of the existing medical marijuana licensed businesses in the City of Sparks, to the cannabis organizations, and also licensed, licensed alcohol beverage wholesalers, soliciting their input for the preparation of the, the business impact statement. On May 24th, the city held, city staff held a stakeholders' meeting to discuss the proposed changes to Title V and also the business impact statement. There were 18 stakeholders that attended the meeting. Laura Jacob Sims with the McConnell, McDonnell Corano, representing Greenleaf Wellness, expressed concern on the wording in the Title V amendment of not having a specific fee where we said that it would be the maximum allowed by the state, or a percentage. Some other comments, we received two comments or two responses from the questionnaire for the preparation of the business impact statement. The response received indicate that the proposed amendment to Title V would not impose a direct and insignificant economic burden upon the businesses, or directly restrict the formation, operation, or the expansion of medical marijuana establishments. One respondent remarked that the cannabis industry supports a 3% ceiling on license fees enacted by local government. The other, another, the other respondent expressed concern over requiring a retail medical marijuana license when the testing lab will have no way to distinguish if it's retail or medical marijuana that they're testing. To address the concerns from the responses on the business impact statement, the business license fee amount proposed in Title V amendments that will be presented at the public hearing in the second reading incorporates changes to set the maximum amount now at 3%. Addressing the, the comments on the single-stream operations for marijuana, the proposed Title V, again, presented in the second reading or public hearing, amends, allows businesses a single stream under retail or 453D business license fees. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby. Mr. Lawson.
Karen, this is just gonna be retail marijuana that gets the 3%, correct?
And we're, I'm reading in here, too, something about testing. We're gonna tax that 3% too?
The text, the ta-
Texting or taxing, or testing?
The testing labs, that remains the same as, as in the current Title V.
So we're just, and then the-
All we are doing is adding a new fee structure for retail marijuana businesses.
So that'll be done, we'll know which one it is at the point of sale, because you have a marijuana card, you're gonna get it from this pot. If you don't have one, you're gonna get it from this pot, so to speak.
For the, the cultivation and production?
I'm talking about at retail, so if I'm a medical customer, I pay a different price than if I'm a retail-
That's correct.
-recreational customer.
That's at the sales. But on the Title V amendments, we, we are proposing that you, do you want to address?
Sure. I just want to be clear that we're all on the same page here.
The 3% number that you're hearing today is a gross receipts tax of the business license fee that we're proposing on retail marijuana. The way the licensing would work under the proposal that you'll see for your second reading is that if the business holds any form of 453D license, excuse me, which is the retail license under state law, then they would be subject to the 3% gross receipts fee.
Medical or recreational?
As to whether or not the sale is medical or recreational, is that what you're referring to? Yes.
So how, I mean, shouldn't, a medical, I understand, pays less. They don't pay that 15% excise tax plus the 3% on the license.
So medical pays less through, through the state system. They would not pay the additional 10% excise tax at point of sale. They would pay the 3% under this proposal, yes. It would just be gross receipts for the entirety of the business.
Entire dispensary. Okay?
Mr. Dare.
So this particular reading is, the impact statement is not how it impacts Sparks, it's how it impacts those particular businesses we're talking to?
That's correct.
Today's conversation has nothing to do with whether if this is enough, if, if there's enough happening to make sure we cover what is needed for Sparks? Because it doesn't seem like we got any of that information.
The intent of the business impact statement is to solicit comments from the existing businesses or other people, interested members of the community, on what they foresee the business impact of us adding a new- business impact of us adding a new fee.
How about the impact on us? How about the impact on our city, the impact on our police, on our fire, on collection, on the safety up here, just all of the things that happen? Who puts that in and when do we talk about that?
Ms. Melby is correct. The purpose of the business impact statement is to discuss essentially the effect on business. What will the effect on business be? It is essentially the council's opportunity to acknowledge that what you are doing or might do could have some effect on businesses. Whether it does or does not doesn't preclude you from doing anything. It just is essentially an opportunity for businesses to be heard and for you to acknowledge that you've heard them. The policy debate on whether or not the proposed revenue is enough to cover your costs or to make it worth your while is, you should have that debate at the second reading of these.
That's my question. And then with that, will you bring in information on that impact? Because there's an impact that's coming, for sure. And to say there's not, that's not true. So there is an impact that's coming. And so with that, I'd like to make sure that we know what that impact is as we make these, have these conversations. And it sounds like this particular one is only for the medical marijuana groups that what they, how they are taking in what we're anticipating we're going to do. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay. No questions?
Ms. Bybee?
Karen, I had a couple of questions. You said that you sent questioners out to 28 recipients, and 18 stakeholders attended the meeting, but you only received two responses?
That's correct.
To your questionnaire?
Yes, we only received two responses. Two questionnaires were mailed in, or emailed to me, but yeah.
Because it's kind of difficult if they didn't respond. And then, in a lot of your information presented here for business impact statement, more than once it's difficult to determine revenue, difficult to predict cost. I'm curious why, it is new in Nevada, I understand that, but we have data from other states, Colorado for three years, Washington, and Oregon, that have legalized recreational marijuana, that we have statistics available for revenue, for cost to local governments, for business impacts on those regions. Why we didn't look at any of those to kind of, can we not do that? Is it just we can only look at what's here locally? We can't use data from other jurisdictions to help us, to help give us more information? I mean, we really have no information here, very little information to make a decision on.
Well, we can look at other jurisdictions, but every state's laws have been different. So it's, one thing that would be difficult is to actually look, to get an interpretation based on what's happened in, for example, Colorado, because their laws are different than what's being proposed in Nevada or was approved by Nevada.
I guess, I guess the other thing, part of your, you know, on this number four, you had, the governing body estimates the annual cost to local government for enforcement. You're basically saying it's difficult to predict, which I understand that. And that what it's saying in this business impact statement isn't part of that impact too. Our costs are a factor that we're looking at. And it says it may, the revenue may cover it, but we don't know that it would. My concern is, we're in a very tight fiscal situation right now. We've got, we don't have money for turf. We don't have enough police that we need to have. I mean, our budget situation is pretty dire. And so we look at this, and what it's telling me right here is that we don't know if those costs, the revenue's going to cover those costs. And is that not a consideration that we're looking at in the business impact statement? Or is it only the impact on the businesses themselves that are in the industry? And I mean, am I, I know the next step, July 10th, is a bigger conversation, but is this not part of today, the effect on the city?
I do think that your concerns are well-founded. As I explained to Councilman Dare, I think that the broader question, the policy debate, what you're looking at in terms of whether or not the projected revenues are enough to cover the presumed costs to the city, is probably more appropriate for the second reading of the ordinances.
Okay. So that's not something, even though it's listed in here today, that's not something that we need to, would be considered?
No. I would think that your focus today should be on whether or not you find that the business impact statement is sufficient to move forward with the broader questions as it relates to the policy.
Okay. And I just have one more question on your conclusion. It states like second to last line about the fees imposed of licensing medical marijuana establishments. Is that because we're licensing the medical marijuana establishments to provide retail? It doesn't say retail on here. But is it because our licensing that we're proposing is only for medical marijuana establishments in this business impact statement?
It is, it is that way, Councilwoman Bybee, because the proposal does only authorize retail sales at existing medical marijuana establishments. And the reason for that is that question two allows retail sales only at existing medical marijuana establishments.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, the governing body estimates the annual cost to the local government for enforcement of the proposed rule is, and Councilwoman Bybee said that it may cover the cost. It does not say that. It says at this time, it is difficult to predict the cost to the city for enforcement, but portions of this revenue generated from the changes are anticipated to cover the additional cost related to enforcement. And then if you go down to number six, it says the money generated by the new fee, would that be recreational?
That would be the 3%.
3%?
On the business licenses.
Increase in existing fee will be used by the local government to, anticipated revenue will be used to offset costs associated with the regulation and oversight of this new industry, including increased business license activity, code enforcement, police activity, and emergency medical response. So it's anticipated that the revenue will cover these expenses.
We expect that it would, Councilman Smith. The difficulty is, of course, it is a new industry and we don't know what the multiplier would-
So I just want to set this straight, that we're not saying that it may or probably won't, but it's anticipated that it will. I just want to keep that clear.
At this juncture, it is.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, any further questions? All right, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I move to adopt a business impact statement related to the proposed amendment to SMC Chapter 5.80 concerning licensing and operation of existing medical marijuana establishments and distributors as a retail marijuana establishment.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve Agenda item 910. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
So I do want clarification on the vote. All I'm saying is that you did do a business impact here. That's all I'm saying, yes to you?
You're acknowledging that the business impact statement that is in front of you presently is sufficient to go on to the next step, which would be the broader policy debate as to whether or not you, number one, want to allow the retail sale of marijuana in the city of Sparks, or I suppose for that matter, cultivation, distribution, anything that goes along with question two. And then, if you do want to allow it, under what conditions? And, and basically what?
Thank you.
Okay, passes four to one. Thanks, people. Okay, 911 is the first reading.
Bill number 2719, an ordinance amending Title V of the Sparks Municipal Code, sections 5.80.010 to 5.80.200, and adding 5.80.35, 5.80.55, and 5.80.195 to license medical marijuana dispensaries to sour or dispense marijuana and marijuana-infused products at retail, license medical marijuana cultivation and production facilities to cultivate and produce marijuana and marijuana-infused products at retail, license independent testing laboratories to test marijuana and marijuana-infused products at retail, license distributors to transport marijuana and marijuana-infused products at retail, and other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, 9.11 is the first reading. This is the first reading for bill number 2719. The bill, the public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, July 10th, 2017. Number 9.12 is the first reading.
Bill number 2720, an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code, sections 20.03.25, 20.03.26, and 20.08.002, to permit licensed medical marijuana dispensaries to sour or dispense marijuana, edible marijuana products, and marijuana-infused products at retail, to permit licensed independent testing laboratories and medical marijuana production and cultivation facilities to test, produce, and cultivate marijuana, edible marijuana products, and marijuana-infused products at retail, and other matters properly related thereto.
Agenda 9.12, the first reading. This is the first reading for bill number 2720. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, July 10th, 2017. And now I'll turn the meeting quickly over to Mr. Smith.
Okay, move on to public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning. 10.1 is the second reading. Public hearing, discussion, and possible adoption of bill number 2718, and ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Sparks Municipal Code, modifying environmental control and pretreatment standards and providing for other matters properly related thereto. All you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem Smith, members of council. For the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the city of Sparks. This item before you today is an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of Sparks Municipal Code and modifies sections involving environmental control and pretreatment standards within that code. These sections were previously modified by council action in 2014 to maintain compliance with U.S. EPA Clean Water Act provisions. EPA will only review formally adopted standards. So, once those two, yeah, sorry. If you'd like, I can hold for a few minutes. Okay. Once the 2014 amendments were formally completed, those are submitted to the EPA for final review by them. Numerous revisions have been requested out of that review by the EPA, which are included in this amendment before you today. These are revisions largely clarifying in nature, changing title names, adding some descriptive words, things like that. One, so nine sections of code were modified in that manner, and one new section was added to formally define and upset, basically, an exceptional incident outside of one of our users' control. So that completes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Any questions or comments?
Work you were doing with UNR?
No, this is, this is separate.
Is it just other, similar? Okay. I'll move to approve. Let me get to the-
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. So, Ms. Bybee, do you have a question or comment?
No, I was sort of need to move a second.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Now I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve bill number 2718 as outlined by staff.
Bybee?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes, you can answer. Thanks, Andy. Signed out on the air. Okay. 11.1, planning and zoning public hearings and action items. 11.1, second reading, public hearing, consideration of possible adoption of bill number 2717 to rezone a site approximately 4.09 acres in size from PO, professional office, to C2, located at 4950 Vista Boulevard in Sparks. Karen, welcome.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Today is a rezoning request for the Rock Church property. They are requesting to rezone their property, which is located at 4950 Vista Boulevard. Here's a locational map, our vicinity map. Here's Vista. This would be a ratchable drive right here. They are requesting to rezone the property from professional office or PO to C2 general commercial. The church has been approved by a special use permit in 2003, and in 2006, a special use permit was approved to allow the operation of a preschool, and another special use permit was approved in 2012 to expand to allow a private school and childcare facility. The church requires a conditional use permit in professional office, but permitted in the C2 zoning district. Childcare requires a conditional use permit in both the professional office and C2 general commercial districts. With the church and childcare located at the site, it has been effectively been operating as commercial use for years. The site has a comprehensive plan designation, oops, I went the wrong way, I'm sorry, of commercial. You can see on this map, the red line indicates, this is the property right here. So they are designated on our comprehensive plan, our existing land use map, as commercial. So this request is consistent with our comprehensive plan land use map. They are requesting, on this map, the existing zoning is shown in blue, which is professional office. They are requesting to go to C2. You can see in the vicinity of the area that there's C2 zoning to the north of them and also to the south of this existing property. The one addition, several changes that would occur that be a result of going from the professional office to the C2 zoning would be that the C2 would allow them to change their signage standards. Professional office building signs are 1% of the gross floor area, and C2 allows one square foot of building signage for each business frontage. Another additional requirement that would be allowed for signs under C2, are freestanding signs are allowed, which are not allowed in your professional office district, and also digital signs are allowed under C2 and not in professional office. There are a variety of uses that are permitted in C2. Bear with me, I'll read the list. Multifamily over 110 units requires a conditional use permit. Halfway house required by a conditional use permit. Hotels and Melta is required by a conditional use permit. Resorts, dude ranch, and gust ranch are by conditional use permit. Animal services overnight, payday loan establishments, title loans, palm brokers a conditional use permit, craft distillery, brewery, grocer and food market, liquor store, drive-through businesses, bail bond services, funeral and internment services, maintenance and repair services, a tattoo parlor, wedding chapel, building material and sales services, convenience store, nursery, which would be retail, commercial, and wholesale, also general retail, auto and truck repair, light, manufacturing home dealers, manufactured home dealers as a conditional use permit, vehicle rentals, bar and lounge, cultural institution, entertainment facility, theater, recreational facility, a major recreational facility requires a conditional use permit, production and craft work, building maintenance services, commercial and industrial supply and equipment providers, and conditional use permit is required for mini warehouse project. Also, there are some uses that are permitted in C2 that would require a conditional use permit in PO, a call center, a car wash, gas station, church of worship, a worship center, event centers and banquet halls, a fraternal lodge or community service facilities, and media production. This site, as you can see on the map, is adjacent to C2, and there is a property to the south that's professional office. This adjacency is not typical of concern, however. The site is also adjacent to residential, but the existing C2, the C2 is existing except for this parcel in the area. The Sparks Municipal Code has standards that requires buffering and other design standards when residential and non-residential land uses are adjacent to each other. The standards are the same with whether the non, its non-residential zoning is buffering between C2 and PO. These properties to the north and south of the site are C2 and are adjacent to the same neighbor as the Rock Church. While a number of uses and intensity of those uses are greater in the C2 district, it is not uncommon for the city of Sparks to locate C2 properties adjacent to residential. As you can see on this map, there is existing C2 adjacent to the residential to the east. The C2's properties to the north and south of the site are adjacent to the same single-family neighborhood as the subject property is. The rezoning this property would grant it the same zoning enjoyed by the- The rezoning this property would grant it the same zoning enjoyed by the neighboring properties to the north and south. In summary, the staff believes that finding Z1 can be made, which states that the request as submitted is consistent with the City of Sparks comprehensive plan, because the PO and C2 zoning are permitted in the commercial land use district on our land use map. Also, the requested rezoning supports and sustains the comprehensive plan goal, MG1, which is to support economic vitality by providing non-residential land use space. Staff believes that finding Z2 can be made, which is that the subject is consistent with the surrounding uses, because C2 existing already exists within the vicinity. In accordance with finding C3, which requires the public notice was given and public hearings were held, there were 750 notices mailed out to the neighbors, and 196, there were 196 notices mailed out to 750 feet surrounding this property on April 22nd. Also, in the Gazino Gazette Journal, a public notice was published on April 20th. The planning commission in city council functions as the public hearing for this item. Staff and the planning commission believes that the findings for this rezoning can be made and recommends approval. This concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Dare, did you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick. So on this, on your list of everything, so if somebody went in with any of these other things that didn't have a CUP, and this is more my information, I'm okay with this in the setting, but they can put anything in there without having to get, coming to the city council, or, like, let's say they wanted to put a vehicle rental place in there, or a liquor store. Because you have that as a list of what they could do without a conditional use, does that mean that they can just, that land now can be used for any of those things, and without, without ever coming before us or before you guys with stipulations? I mean, because like, I mean, right around there, there's plenty of homeowners that probably would not like, like the idea of a car dealership, vehicle rental place there? Or, I don't know. Is it...
Rezoning to C2 zoning would allow any of the permitted uses that's in the district. So if you want, so if somebody wanted to do a liquor store, that is a permitted use in the C2 district, so they could put a liquor store there, without having any public hearing or, actually, actually, they wouldn't even have any entitlement unless they were constructing a new building, and then that would go through an administrative review.
Ms. Bybee?
Yeah, I just have one question that I'm ready to make a motion. Karen, were there, the notices that were sent out to surrounding property owners, did you hear back? Were there any responses or objections to the change in the zoning from property owners nearby?
We did receive a few comments, but most of them were, they were just asking more of a clarification, why, you know, what is going on. When we told them they're asking to go to C2 zoning, we didn't receive any negative comments.
Any questions or comments?
It is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Ms. Bybee?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I move to adopt Bill Number 2717 and approve the rezoning request associated with PCN 17-0015 based on findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Karen. Timing is everything, folks. We have comments from the public. Seeing none, comments from the city council and city manager. Mr. Krutz?
I've got two items to review with you. The first one is a very happy item, and it's a certificate of senatorial recognition that was presented to the City of Sparks for Deer Park Pool from Sandra Heller. Congratulations on your 75th anniversary. Thank you for serving as the premier recreational site for summer funds in 1942. Best wishes in all of your future endeavors, dated May 28.
Wonderful, wonderful. Yay.
And the second is an announcement related to our planning commission. Due to a resignation, the City of Sparks is looking for someone to serve the remainder of a term on the Sparks Planning Commission. The term runs through December 31 of 2018, and this appointee would be eligible for reappointment for additional terms. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services on the web page, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, then click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on July 14, 2017. Thank you.
Dare?
I just want to remind anybody watching on Facebook, and all those thousands of people out here in the crowd, that we have 39 North Downtown Sparks happening. And I was there this week, and great music, great hangout stuff, they have stuff for the kids, there's the train, you can do a donation if you'd like, but you can just, there's a train for the kids that can go on that's free or a donation. And just an awesome time, it was really great. There's vendors down there and everything, and just want to make sure you know you have something right here in your own city that you can come down and enjoy. Thank you.
Anyone else, comments? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, June 26, 2017, with a roll call.
Agent person Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Acting Chief Administrative Officer Krutz?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Thank you. Item Number 3, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to item Number 4. 4.1, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Ben, chair.
Motion by Agency Member Martini, second. Member Dare, please vote. It was up a minute ago.
There you go.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.1, consideration and approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of May 22, 2017. Looking for, are there any corrections, additions, or motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Member Lawson, seconded by Member Martini. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 6, business item 6.1, reported claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period May 4, 2017, through June 7, 2017. Looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Agency Member Dare. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Lawson. Motion carries unanimously. Item Number 7, 7.1, comments from the public. Do I have any comments from the public? Seeing none. Item 7.2, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer. Mr. Dare?
I have two quick ones, just officially. I'd like this AB 417 that just got passed, I'd like to get on that as quick as we can to find out what it is that we could possibly get from the legislation. That was a legislation that just passed for the move, I think, whatever it was called.
For the main streets.
For the main streets, yeah. The main streets, they said there was finances and things for redevelopment areas, so however we can find that out. And then, one of the things that we've talked a little bit about is the idea of asking to get, during these meetings, to start having some reports of what is happening down there. We have a lot of movement happening in our areas, and we'd like to make sure anybody watching on Facebook are aware of what's happening, and give everyone an idea.
So just, so you're looking for, at the redevelopment agency meetings, if we have brief updates on the two redevelopment agencies and activity or action that is happening? Kind of an update, quick monthly update? That would be great. Do I have any other comments from agency members? Looks like I've lost them. Okay. Move to adjourn?
Here.
Have a motion, second?
Yeah.
We're adjourned.